...of this regular meeting of the Board of Adjustment of the Township of Franklin has been provided. Board members, applicant professionals, and members of the public, please speak directly into the mics so that our recording secretary can properly process minutes. Applicants and professionals, please fill out the sheet on the table when you've completed your testimony. Thank you.
Cheryl Bithia and Robert Shepherd ask to be excused this evening. Richard Pocanek.
Joel Reese.
Yes.
Alan Rich.
Yes.
Gary Rosenthal.
Yes.
Vaseem Verdas.
Yes.
Faraz Khan.
Yes.
Michael Doherty.
Yes.
And Robert Thomas.
Yes. Now, we're going with the preliminary agenda. That was in the packet. I didn't see another one.
No, there was no changes. So, we're going to go with the resolution for Wilma is first. Richard, well, he's not here. Joel Reese and Faraz cannot vote, so they can take a second and first from somebody else.
Okay. Amy Wilma, ZBA 1900021, we need a motion.
I'll move.
I'll second.
Alan Rich.
Yes.
Gary Rosenthal.
Yes.
Vaseem Verdas.
Yes.
Michael Doherty.
Yes.
Robert Thomas.
Yes. 64 Casa Asensio, ZBA 2100027.
Faraz and Mike Doherty cannot vote.
I'll move.
Okay, so Gary and Joel. Joel Reese.
Yes.
Alan Rich.
Yes.
Gary Rosenthal.
Yes.
Vaseem Verdas.
Yes.
Robert Thomas.
Yes. Nellajana Das, 23, ZBA 230009.
Joel Reese and Faraz Khan cannot vote.
I'll move.
Second.
Alan Rich.
Yes.
Gary Rosenthal.
Yes.
Vaseem Verdas.
Yes.
Michael Doherty.
Yes.
And Robert Thomas.
Yes. Just to take care of one housekeeping matter under hearings. Oden Pharmaceuticals, ZBA 2200014, preliminary final major site plan with C and D variances in which the applicant seeks to approve approval to construct 17,280 square foot two-story expansion to the existing warehouse at 30 Franklin Square Drive Somerset Block 502.02, Lot 39.05. The B1 zone is not going to be heard tonight. It's carried to a date yet to be determined. Notification then, of course, will be needed. Moving back up the discussion, extension of approval, Praise Presbyterian Church, ZBA
Mr. Chairman. I was always going to take a wrap my hands around it. Mr. Chairman, Jim Stahl, S.T.A.H.L. The firm is Boris Golden Foley, Vignolo Hyman and Stahl. I am here to move the extension of approval for the reasons set forth in our submission. If there are any questions, the board can let me know. It's called a pregnant pause. What did I forget?
How long do you want?
I always get longer than I ask for. I think a six-month extension would be fine.
Okay, just a quick comment for the reasoning behind the request.
Well, just to make some decisions within the internal structure of the church funding and to complete resolution compliance. This isn't a situation where the property is getting sold, so we're under contract. It's really to clean up the approval. That's really the reason.
Any questions? The motion?
To approve the extension?
Please.
I'll second.
Joel Reese.
Yes.
Alan Rich.
Yes.
Gary Rosenthal.
Yes.
Vaseem Verdas.
Yes.
Faraz Khan.
Yes.
Michael Doherty.
Yes.
Robert Thomas.
Yes. Okay, moving on. Fisher Realty, ZBA 2200018, preliminary final major site plan with C and D variances in which the applicant is requesting permission to run a landscape business at 221 Bennett's Lane Somerset Block 85 Lots 24 and 25 in the R40 zone. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Sorry, just before we start, I just want for full transparency and for the record, now that I see the applicant in the back, I realize that I went to high school with him years ago. Brian? Yes, okay. We're not in the same grade or anything, but I just want you guys to know that. Just, I don't think it's a conflict just going to high school with somebody, but just for transparency.
And I appreciate that, Rebecca, and Brian is not a member of the entity. He's a member of the family. The entity is owned by Chris and Howard Fisher, so, I mean, he's obviously employed by the company, but I see no conflict. And it wouldn't be any, I don't want to lecture, I mean, I do some of the work you do, so there's no conflict with you. If Mr. Thomas was related to him, it still would be a distant disqualifier, I assume. So, Mr. Chairman, I have no problem whatsoever for this fine attorney to remain in place.
And let's continue.
Actually, I also have something I meant to ask. Mark, are you? I live at 269 Bennett's Lane, like, just a stone's throw away, literally, almost like an next-door neighbor from 221, so is that...
Is that within 200 feet? If you are, then that might be a conflict for you to vote tonight.
Chris, was she on the 200-foot list?
I did not. Okay, all right, good.
You all think 200 feet is less than it really is.
Okay. Yeah, the houses there, they're on like 2, 3...
I would have done it, Chris, but I have my hand on the microphone. Yes.
I did not, yeah.
He would not be within 200 feet.
Okay, all right.
And there's no objection to, I mean, everyone here lives in Franklin, so they're either closer or farther away from the property.
Okay, well, if I start again, go ahead.
Why, if it pleased the chairman and board, I represent the applicant Fisher Realty LLC. It's Jim Stahl. I haven't changed my name since my first introduction, and I represent Fisher Realty. They're here this evening for preliminary and final...
Mr. Jim, I know you have a new hearing, but could you go up with, higher with the mic?
Right into your mouth. Okay.
Thank you.
Now, I'll start all over again. We'll get it, the third time is a charm. The, Chris, do I, we have jurisdiction. You've received the notices of publication and service, is that correct? All right, now, I represent Fisher Realty LLC, who owns the property on Bennett's Lane, and the request here is for approval for a landscape business and necessary bulk and use variances because it is a non-permitted use. I have a team of professionals that I've told to be concise and don't waste time, recognizing courtesy to the board. The, this property, for those of you who lived in the area, knew it, some people referred it as a junkyard. I'm going to provide my client, and you're going to see pictures of what it looked like 1999, and today it's a different location, but I have to just put that in context. You understand the efforts and work done by Mr. Voorhees, Mr. Bennett, Mr. Fisher and the family. You see, Gary, you got me all for bludgeon. Our first witness will be Mr. Howard Fisher, Mr. Howard Fisher, and keep that close or you'll get censored the way I do. Please stand and raise your right hand.
Can you state your name and your business address for the record?
Howard.
I'll have to agree to start today.
It's going to run so smoothly after this. Once we get the battery situation figured out, it's...
Howard Fisher. I reside at 10 Short Hills Lane Scotch Plains, New Jersey.
Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
I do.
Thank you.
Mr. Fisher, you are the, one of the principals of Fisher Realty, is that correct?
That's correct.
And in addition to Fisher Realty, there's a business called Fisher Contracting LLC, is that correct?
Yes.
And you and your wife are the principals of that business, is that correct?
That's correct.
And what is the nature of the business? Let me try it this way. You do landscaping, hardscape, including decks, patios, and excavation as necessary in connection with stepping stones and other beautiful enhancements to people's houses?
Yes.
You don't do paving at that location, do you?
No.
And in fact, you do no paving at all with this company, Fisher Contracting, is that correct?
That's correct.
And the only time you use an excavator is when necessary to make a location for, as I say, a deck or a patio, is that correct?
Yes.
Now, there were some photographs that I think were either in Mr. Healy's report or the E.C. report that saw some paving equipment on your property, is that correct?
That's correct.
And why was that equipment on your property?
We were paving Bennett's Lane.
And was that for the township of Franklin?
Yes.
And that's a company that is not at this location in Franklin, is that correct?
That's correct.
And have those paving machines been removed?
Yes.
And they're no longer there, and you will not store paving equipment there, is that correct?
That's correct.
And paving is not a part of the business at this location, is that correct?
That's correct.
Now, with regard to the equipment that you're going to maintain at that premises, as I understand it, you have five dump trucks, correct?
Yes.
Four pickup trucks?
Yes.
A Bobcat?
Yes.
An excavator?
Yes.
A backhoe?
Yes.
And three landscape trailers, is that correct?
That's correct.
And when I say you do landscaping and hardscape, this is, this location is for residential purposes and small minor commercial projects, is that correct?
That's correct.
And you have at this location, and this is the only location of this business, Fisher Contracting, is six employees, is that correct?
Yes.
And the six employees are three drivers and three laborers or workmen, is that correct?
That's correct.
Now, you and I had a discussion, because I asked you, if you have three drivers, why do you have all those vehicles? And why do you have more dump trucks and pickups than you have people?
If one goes down, I have a few of each. In the event, I have to send it out for maintenance or repair.
And if you have a major project, major residential or some more, small commercial, do you usually hire per diem workers?
Yes, we do sub out if it's a bigger job.
And for that reason, you also use those vehicles that you keep on site, is that correct?
That's correct.
And the days of the week that your operation is in, is that Monday through Friday?
Yes.
You don't work Sunday, is that correct?
No.
Do you work Saturdays when the customer or client requires it?
Occasionally.
So, it's not a regular six-day-a-work, six-day-a-week work schedule, correct?
That's correct.
And when the employees come in in the morning, what time do they start?
We do seven to five.
And when they come in, they come in with their personal vehicles or by carpool, is that correct?
That's correct.
And when they come in, they leave their personal vehicles where our engineer, who's going to testify later, will identify, is that correct?
That's correct.
And then they take the vehicles out and they go to the assigned job, is that correct?
That's correct.
And that may include the dump trucks, the pickup trucks, or landscape trailers or other items, is that correct?
That's correct.
And during the day, is there, are there occasions when your workmen come back from their assigned location to Bennett's Lane to refill mulch, topsoil, stone, and other supplies?
Yes, occasionally.
And then at the end of the day, your employees bring the equipment back for the end of the day, is that correct?
That's correct.
And do you require, or do you request that they stay a little longer at the end of the day to get the trucks ready for the following day?
That's correct.
And as they fill the truck with either topsoil, gravel, or whatever they need, is that correct?
That's correct.
And just for the record, because you and I discussed it, there is no mulching or grinding operation on this site, isn't that correct?
That's correct.
They don't want anyone to misinterpret this. Now, with regard to supplies, with regard to the paving blocks, the stone, the redstone, all the things that you have there, do you pick that up yourself with your workmen and go to a location that you have a vendor, fill your truck, and bring it back to this location?
Yes, we use our own trucks to pick supply up and bring it back.
So, there are no deliveries of material, is that correct?
That's correct.
Now, with regard to, because I want to get this all out, the house that is being part of the application, that is, you haven't decided whether your daughter's going to live there or whether you're going to rent the home, is that correct?
That's correct.
And the, let me just go here. With regard to the vehicles, you understand that it will be limited in the resolution if we obtain the approvals, that only light maintenance will be permitted if they do, and that will be inside. There'll be no engine re, um, engine work, major engine work, transmissions, axles. It's going to be minor items to preventive maintenance or regular maintenance, is that correct?
That's correct.
And if you have to take those vehicles, some, if they have a major issue, they'll be taken to another, to one of your vendors who do your mechanical work, is that correct?
That's correct.
And now, let's get into the 9,000-square-foot building. Our architect is going to testify that the building, after reviewing the fire prevention and staff reports, we're going to look to reduce the height of that building to 25 feet, is that correct?
That's correct.
And we intend to have sprinklers, is that correct?
That's correct.
And to otherwise comply with all fire prevention and township codes to permit the storage of vehicles in the building, is that correct?
That's correct.
And the use of that building, and the architect will describe a little of it, you intend to have two bathrooms in the building, a very small office for maintaining records for your employees, is that correct?
That's correct.
You also intend to store certain material that is stone and stepping stones and other decorative issues that has a tendency to be vandalized or taken, and so you're going to put valuables in the building, A, and then you're going to park as many vehicles as can comfortably be maintained in the building for, again, purposes of security. For example, the Bobcat will go inside and some of the other vehicles, am I correct?
That's correct.
Now, I'm going to show you subject, well, I'm going to show you A through 13, which are photographs, and then I'm going to give them to counsel. I've marked them A1 through A13 with today's date. After I validate them, I'll give them to you.
Okay, thanks, and then we can mark them one at a time?
Well, I have them all marked.
Oh, okay.
In my...
Right, perfect.
...handwriting. All right. You've reviewed these photographs, is that correct?
That's correct.
And in fact, who took the photographs?
Brian, my son.
When did he take them?
Two years ago.
And was that when you bought the property?
About that time, yes.
And from your knowledge, do these photographs fairly and accurately depict what the property looked like in, two years ago, when you bought the property?
Yes, that's correct.
And there are, well, it shows a lot of junk, and this junk that is there, did you ultimately remove it?
Yes.
At a cost of about?
About $150,000.
All right. And there's another photograph, which our engineer will provide, which is a Google Earth photograph from 1999, is that correct?
That's correct.
All right, but I don't want to introduce that at this point in time. Let me just see what else I have here. Give me one second. That's all I have of this witness, Mr. Chairman. I'm going to give Rebecca the photographs.
Any questions from the board? Okay, maybe I should look at the photos before I ask a question.
Mr. Chairman, it may help perhaps for the questions that the board may or may not have, maybe to hear a little bit more of the testimony from the, from the site engineer and the architect, because there might be, I know I have some questions, but I think I want to hear from the engineer. He's going to present the, certainly, you know, the site plan, so he can see where the building is and where they're, you know, where they're storing their equipment, and there's a stor, you know, equipment storage area and material storage area. Some of these things may get answered, or maybe they won't, but you'll have more information to ask good questions, I think, after you hear maybe a little bit more of the testimony.
That's fine, and I think it's also a better idea that everybody gets to look at the photos.
Are issues where the material's going to be stored, where the vehicles are going to be stored, so...
Yes, I think, you know, I think some of the questions may, again, I know I have some questions about that, but I think, you know, after we hear from the engineer, I think some of those...
I agree.
...questions may coalesce a little bit for everybody.
They may sit over there.
One more thing. There's not an A1, it's just A2 through A13.
You know why that is?
Oh.
Because this is A1.
Okay.
And I'll qualify it as soon as the engineer comes up.
Thank you.
Because he's responsible for this one.
Thank you.
Alan, I don't want to stop you from asking a question if you have one, but I...
Oh, you won't stop me from asking questions, no. Chris, where's the HDMI cable?
Oh, no, right here, okay. Now, I wouldn't, I don't object to that, but don't get me in trouble. All right, Steve, would you stand up, please, and raise your right hand?
Can you please state your name and your business address for the record?
Yeah, Steve Parker, Parker Engineering.
Oh, microphone, please.
Got it, microphone.
Steve Parker, Parker Engineering, Summerdale, New Jersey.
Thank you. Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
Yes, I do.
Thank you.
All right, Steve, state, keep that microphone close to assets, you hear however. All right, by whom are you employed, Parker Engineering?
Yes.
Are you a New Jersey licensed engineer?
Yes, I am.
For how many years?
30.
Is the license still in good standing?
Yes, it is.
Have you appeared before this board before?
I have. It's been a little while, but I have, yeah.
We can move on, that's fine.
Thank you. You're qualified. All right, Steve, you know, you and I discussed the fact that you, just describe what we're doing, what is there or was there, and you'll be ready to answer Mr. Healy's questions, because we want to know where things are going to be parked, where the storage of material is going to be maintained, access, ingress, and egress. You know the drill, so I'll leave it to you.
Yeah, I think...
Keep the microphone, keep it close to your mouth.
Yeah, okay. The, I think the photographs that were provided by Mr. Fisher kind of indicate what was existing on the property, and it was, there's a lot of different things parked out there, there was a lot of storage of construction equipment and other things. So, the site is real, the significant changes to the site are going to be that it's going to be cleaned up quite a bit, going to be neatened up and tidied up. In addition to that, Mr. Fisher is proposing to construct a new building that's illustrated on the plans there. It's on the left-hand side of that, that drawing, and, and then also construct an addition onto the existing home that's in the lower left-hand corner of the property as you're looking at the drawing. There is a small addition proposed to the home. The home will also, of course, be updated and upgraded from what currently it looks like right now. In addition to the, to the building, they're proposing some additional plantings on the property. There's some stormwater management, dry wells that are proposed as part of the development as well, and you can see that, you know, the, the proposed use of the site is going to be concentrated in, in the left-hand side, you know, kind of around the shop building that's proposed there, and then the gravel area that's going to be used for site circulation, equipment storage, and material storage is in that same area as well. Part of the project includes construction of a new septic system for both the house and the shop building, and, and by the way, there is, there are existing wetlands on the property, and those are shown mostly in the, kind of, there's a band that runs through, it's, it's a hatched band, you can see that on the drawings, and an application has been submitted to the DEP where it's, DEP takes a long time. It's been, it's been down there for probably the better part of a year, and we're just waiting for the letter of interpretation from the DEP to confirm what we're showing on the drawings there. But that's really the essence of the, the plan. There's, there's no, from the, from the streetscape, you know, there's going to be, it's going to look the same. The driveway is going to remain in this, in the current location. The existing house from the front is going to look the same. The addition is going to be toward the back of the home, and, you know, the interior of the site is really where the change is going to happen.
Before I, I ask you a couple of questions. I'm going to show you what's been identified as A1 of today's date. It purports to be a photograph on the back that says 1979. Can you, did you obtain that photograph?
I, I did, and that's...
Oh.
That's the photograph that's shown right there. That's from a website called Historic Area Photographs. We purchased this photograph. It was used as part of the application to the Delaware and Raritan Canal Commission because they want to see what the conditions were like in 1980. So, we, we purchased the photograph. This is from 1979, and you can see, although it doesn't show the outline of the, the property lines on the draw, on the photograph, you can see where, you know, it's right in the middle of the site. That's the property itself, and you can see what it looked like from the air back then. There was a lot of stuff stored on there. I can't identify all those things, but it looks like there's trucks, truck bodies, heavy equipment, tractors, plows, bulldozers, and stuff like that. So, that's what it looked like back in 1979, and you can see it was used pretty extensively.
Now, Steve, can you go back to your site plan, please? Those, again, the area, what we would call the storage area for material, how are we going to contain that or designate that?
Right in here, you can see that says equipment storage, right in that area there, and then just below that, just below that, is going to be, you know, material storage area. And, and those are areas that we've defined and delineated on the plans themselves with just a dark line, but in, in the field, they're actually going to be using what they call concrete bins, bin blocks, which are just concrete blocks, they're pretty substantial in size. Those will be used to define those areas so that there isn't what we call creep over time. They don't move around, it doesn't extend out. That will contain and confine those areas on the site. They're, you know, they're, they're not, they're only as large as they need to be. Mr. Fisher described his operation, he doesn't do a lot of storage of materials on the site here, so they're sized appropriately for what he, what he, what he anticipates using them for.
Where is the excess area, or the area that vehicles that are not stored in the building will be stored outside?
Well, we show, there's, they can be in the, in the equipment storage area, this doesn't show up very well.
Yeah, it doesn't show up on the, on the TV.
Well, maybe I'll just point to it. Can I go up there?
Yes, of course you can, as long as you take the microphone.
Yeah. So, the, you know, the vehicle storage area, or, or equipment storage right there, there will be some vehicles there, there's vehicle parking here. I think however Mr. Fisher anticipates keeping most of his equipment inside the building, and that's, that's part of the reason for the building, is to keep it inside and protected out of the elements. So, that's, you know, there is going to be some vehicle storage outside, but most of that, I think, will be inside the building itself.
And we've done this, Mr. Chairman, before we, I never know what, what the board's preference is, to do either the comments to the CME report and the Mark Healy report now or after all the testimony is done. after all the testimony is done? We can do either.
Usually, usually we pretty much conclude with that, and we only want to know what you have an issue with or want to discuss.
Not much, not much, okay. I'm done with Mr. Parker. Steve, we'll do that when we, after we're all done, because there's not much there that we have any issues with.
I'll give the opportunity, anybody have any questions come to mind at this point?
Alan, do you want to ask your question?
No, not yet.
Just a few questions, Mr. Chairman, just, just so I can understand, and maybe this probably should have been to Mr. Fisher, but no mulching and grinding, I'm assuming mulching means, maybe you can answer this, I'm assuming mulching means logs aren't brought to the site and then chipped and made into mulch on-site, is that, you understanding what that means?
Yes, that's correct, that will, that will not be happening on the property.
Okay, and then when he says, and when, and when it's no grinding, I'm assuming similar rocks aren't brought onto the site and ground up into smaller bits for landscaping stone?
Right, yeah.
So they're coming to the site as basically finished product, not being ground or mulched on the site, is that your understanding of what that term means?
Yes, it is.
Okay.
Grinding and mulching and grinding, I refer, I think, to mostly the wood and trees and stumps, and they will not be doing that on the property.
That's in the category, Mark, of recycling, under the NJAC, under the code, the environmental code, that's why I brought it up, so there's no question, that's not going to happen.
I got you, thank you, I appreciate that. The concrete bin box, I'm assuming you can detail that and put that on the site plan?
Yes, we can.
Okay, and then based on your conversations with your client, so we've heard that, you know, the amount of, of what's going to be stored on the site in terms of the, the equipment and the materials, we just missed the-
Yeah, sorry.
-screen went away. It was a 9,000 square foot building, and then there's those two discreet areas for material and, and, and equipment storage, so I guess the question is why, then there's still an area of gravel, why is that, why is that gravel area that size?
That's just so that they have room to maneuver their vehicles, when they bring the vehicles into and out of the site, they're most oftentimes pulling trailers, and so it's just really to provide some maneuvering room for those, and to provide access into the shop building as well.
Why don't you take a deep breath and just, just reconnect so the board can see the plan as you're talking?
And Jim, can we pass around what's been marked as A1 onto the board, the photo from 1979?
No, no, it's already up on the, on the screen. You can't say no to attorneys or Chris.
I know, it's, I mean, I can see it right here.
The cable? Might, might need, need a, a new battery. Two out of three.
That's, that's all right, Christine, we've got, got two.
An A minus there, Christine.
Correct their attention to the right side of this, to the right side of the room.
Mark, what was your last question?
Well, I think, I think he was going to show the gravel area that was just asked about.
Right.
Yeah, the, the gravel area.
Over here, Steve, Steve, there's one up.
I just pointed, uh-
We're just trying to keep you on your toes.
Yeah.
It's like the Price is Right.
I think the gravel area that we're, that we're proposing is the area that surrounds the building, it's back here, it's in here as well, and then the gravel driveway, you know, proceeds out to Bennett's Lane, there is a loop that comes around to the house, and so this is the area here that's going to really provide access for, for turning, maneuvering the vehicles that come into the site, which are going to be trucks and trailers, and then provide access into the bay doors of the building here on this side, and also on this side over here.
All right, and then since, since you're there, I don't believe you spoke to, there's, there's areas that are different shading, can you explain what that means?
Yeah, yeah, we can, so these crosshatched area here, those are areas that have been previously used by the prior owner for storing equipment, there was, there was trailers, when I say trailers, like tractor trailer trailers, back through here in the woods, this was gravel area, and that's going to be restored to lawn or, or natural conditions, it's going to be replanted and allowed to go back, that's, that's going to, that will no longer be gravel, it's gravel right now, it will no longer be gravel. This area here, that I'm pointing to, that shows a hatched area, is actually an area of woods or brush, that will be removed, and so that'll be, that will be gravel, and again, that's just to provide a smooth transition here so that they can maneuver around the site, turn the, the trucks and trailers around, and have access into the shop building.
And then one of the issues that I know that you were dealing with, with our engineer, was the relative difference in the, the before and after of impervious coverage, what is, what is the end result here?
So, so this is what, this is what was agreed to between our office and CME's office as well, it, it's a little bit different than what was shown on the 1979 photograph, that actually showed more impervious coverage, and I think over time, maybe some of that may have changed somehow, but, so the bottom line is, this is what's been agreed to between us and the CME office as existing and proposed conditions, so there will be a slight increase in impervious coverage as a result of the project, but that will be addressed through the installation of the dry wells, there's a bank of dry wells up in this area here, and then there's going to be another dry well. My screen go up there? And then there's going to be another dry well at the front of the site by the house and garage, so there'll be another dry well here, and then there's going to be five dry wells back in this area here for stormwater management, that's to account for the increase in impervious coverage from the project, but-
But, but, again, the site already had gravel, you're doing basically a balancing-
Reconfigured.
My understanding is that, and correct me if I'm wrong on this figure, because you were dealing with CME directly, not me, but my understanding is the net increase is below 1,000 square feet, is that right?
No, I think it's a little bit more than that.
It's below some threshold, so that it's a, it's a, it's a minor stormwater project, and then that particular increase you're addressing through these dry wells?
Exactly, that's exactly correct, yeah, and you can see what we're showing here is, you know, these circles are proposed trees that are going to be planted in those areas that were formerly gravel, and we're also proposing some additional trees, there's an existing landscape berm here, we're going to continue that out toward the road, so there, there'll be new trees planted in those areas that are gravel and will become naturalized.
Those are my questions, Mr. Chairman.
And, and, and looking at A13, now, dated 9/21/23, is this, is this all your, your equipment? Oh, yeah, oh, because I was going to say, it looks like a junkyard.
It's a junkyard, it was since the 70s, and we did the cleanup, there was-
Yeah, I didn't mean to insult you, but it looks like a junkyard.
It was, yeah, it was, it's over 200 pieces of garbage, you know, we had to get rid of heavy equipment and stuff, so.
That was just last month, a few weeks ago?
Two years ago, that's when they started to fill stuff there. The pictures are two years old.
Oh, because the date says 9/21/23.
No, that's my marking, Mr. Reese, that, when we mark the exhibits, we mark the today's date, but those were two years ago, was the testimony.
Has there been any testing for contamination on the site?
I'm not sure, has the-
No. There's no visible smell or any type of contamination, so there was no reason for us to pursue that.
Been no testing?
Well, let me ask you a question, do you have the microphone with him, when you, when you bought the property, was there any Phase 1 done?
No.
All right, was there any history reviewed of environmental?
We hired environmental to do wetlands, so we had that marked out, and, but no Phase 1 on the property.
Okay.
Well, well, the concern would be if there were old motor vehicles and oil being used, and it could be, there could be soil contamination, so, so wouldn't you, wouldn't you have to test that to make sure?
Well, you'd have to test it, but that's, I have to say this gently, it's not a function of, it's not your responsibility, it's ours, I mean, he should, should, we should get it tested with a Phase 1, but it's not a, normally it's not a condition of an approval, that's, you know, that's how it usually works. I say that gently, because I never like to, to say that the board has no, you know, business in that area, but it's, it's, it's not a condition that boards under the statute are permitted.
I would agree with Mr. Stahl, but I've seen boards do it, but this, it's not what you're here to do, right, weighing the D1 variance and the C1 variance under the statute.
And I agree, and I'm going to encourage my client to at least get a Phase 1, because if not, I mean, in, in five years, groundwater could be a problem, and so I'm going to recommend that he does it, you know, voluntarily, but not as a condition. The pictures you have here, showing all the equipment and everything, what is, what is yours and what is old equipment that's there, what was left, I guess?
Everything you see in those pictures was, that was left, we purchased the property-
The excavators and, and all that?
Farm tractors, uh-
The excavators look fairly new.
Dump trucks were left there, and we did the cleanup, took us a year to clean it up. The excavator that looks new could have been ours, pulling the stuff onto trailers and whatnot, so you may be looking at one of ours to do the cleanup.
Okay, we know what processes you're not going to do there, but what processes are you going to do there, we know about the gravel, we just talked about that, but what, what other processes are you going to do?
Topsoil, which we use.
Meaning what, topsoil?
Topsoil, if we're doing, let's say, a house project, we're laying sod, we bring topsoil into our customer before the sod goes down, so we keep a small supply of that on-site.
Mr. Rich, I did forget one question, it may clear up something, may I interrupt you?
Sure.
Howard, we do not sell any of that material, either wholesale or retail, including the stones, gravel, mulch, or topsoil, is that correct?
That's correct.
All of that material you use in your decorative, I call it decorative landscaping, hardscaping work that you do for residential and small commercial customers, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, I just wanted to clarify that.
Thank you, thank you, let's move on to the building, you're going to store, other than machinery, what are you going to store in the building?
Well, we have a lowboy that moves the machinery, and that's the reason why we need that access to turn around, to pull that in there, paver brick will be stored in the building, a forklift to load stuff in there, we have our seeds, fertilizers, anything to do with our landscaping.
You have fertilizers in there, how about chemicals?
No, we don't-
Weed control, anything like that?
No, I don't do any of that.
Gasoline, oil, anything like that?
Well, gasoline would be for our mowers or for-
And that's going to be stored inside, too?
And it would be five gallon can, we don't store it in bulk.
What, what equipment are you going to have in the, in the building to do small, minor repairs on your, on your, you do your own oil changes?
My crafting toolbox will be in there with my tools to do-
Any welders, cutting equipment, grinders?
Light, light maintenance is all we do, there will be a bench grinder in there, there'll probably be a little buzz box welder in there, if something, you know, minor stuff, nothing where we're going to do any major mechanical, I sub that, I source all that out.
Okay. In the course of doing your projects, is there any, is it resulting in any waste that has to be removed from the project, if so, where's that taken, how's that disposed of?
Well, if it's, with our plantings, where it's pots and whatnot, I do have a dumpster that, that goes in, we bring that back, like a 20-yard dumpster, and then-
Did you bring back any lawn refuse or clippings or things like that?
Clippings, nothing like that, no compost, nothing like that.
Anybody else?
I have a question, this is in regards to the area that's shown as existing gravel to be removed, and this is a sliver in between the two wetlands, so I, so this is a driveway, I would assume, which will be topsoiled, seeded, and mulched, so this area would no longer be used as a driveway, I would assume?
Yeah, that's correct, that was, the, the prior owner actually used that to get access to the back part of the property, that's no longer going to be used, that's going to be just, you know, naturalized, there's some trees we're going to plant in there, but other than that, it's going to be, just revert back to what was, you know, whatever nature takes over.
And you had mentioned in this report as well that you applied for an LOI with the NJDEP, and that's in pending application?
That's correct, yeah, we have, we've applied, it's probably been about a year, and it's pending right now, we're still waiting for the final LOI, I think we're getting close, but-
Okay, and so, because there is some work proposed as you're going to remove the gravel, you know, within the buffer area, within the 50-foot buffer, as you have shown on the other side, but this is, the, the two wetlands in the area in between is buffer as well, do you plan to restore it, or like, why mulching it, I'm just trying to think of it, I know you, I see some trees in the other one-
Yeah.
-but do you plan to, like, restore it, or do you plan to just mulch it, topsoil, like?
So normally what happens is that just gets seeded with native, you know, grass mixes, and then mulch is a term that's used for soil stabilization-
Okay.
It's, it's not, it's not like wood bark mulch-
Gotcha.
-it's just mulch, like hay mulch, until the seed itself becomes established-
It starts growing.
...and then it's just going to be natural.
And, and you didn't apply for any permits from NJDEP, right?
Well, other than the letter of interpretation, that's been applied for.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
I have a question, just something I had always heard, I'm not sure that it's true, but on the northwest side of the property where the preserved land is, I'd always had heard from a couple of neighbors that there is a gas main that runs across there, and so construction right around it is limited, maybe it's not-
I don't believe that's on this property.
If, if there was, we'd have to do a mark out before we did any digging in that area.
No, that's outside my property, that's, that's easement, and that's outside of our property. That's easement, and that's outside of our property. There is a main, but that's north of my property.
I think there's a certain area around it that you can't dig, and...
There is a 50-foot easement outside of my property.
Steve, could you, is it on the plan, the easement?
You know what? It's not on, it wouldn't be on that map. Yeah, let me, if you want to look at sheet number one, if you have the drawings handy, I'll see if I can pull that up here. So if you look in, this is the, I'm going to go, in the upper right-hand corner is the tax map. And you see, that shows, that shows the location of a pipeline. You just go down, you just had it. Well, if you can see, in the upper right-hand corner, you can see that dashed line is shown as a pipeline. It's outside of this property. So there is something there. It's that dashed line that kind of runs up in the southwest, northeast.
That might be outside the property. But I think there's a certain area, and that might be the easement, and that you can't dig near it. So even though the line itself is not in the property, I was just curious how far you are from it, where you'll be digging.
Yeah, it's very, it's far, it's very far away from anywhere that we're proposing any activity. It's not close to where the work's being done here. I mean, by several hundred feet.
There's presumably an easement that it's in, but then separate from that, the township has an ordinance, a zoning ordinance, that you can have a habitable structure within a certain, I forget if it's 100 feet or 150 feet. But this property is, I think, about 400 to 500 feet away from where they're proposing any development.
Any other questions?
I presume you're going to respond to Mr. House's comments, right?
Yes.
Okay.
Chairman, maybe at this time they can address or let the board know if there's any staff comments that they can't address?
That's the, all right, Steve. Why don't we go through Mr. Healy's report dated September 5, 2023?
Yeah, I'm just looking through, the site description is page one. On page two, it continues on with the description and the easements that are being requested. And page three is the same. It looks like those are just a description of the variance requirements for that. There are some discussion items I think we've talked about already. Page four of Mr. Healy's letter again talks about the variances. And the fact that the two, right now, the property consists of two separate tax lots. Those will be combined into a single lot. That's a recommendation that we would agree with. And I think that's all of Mr. Healy's comments. There's a letter dated September 11, 2023 from CME Associates. And again, I think, I'm going to go through that very quickly because I don't believe there's anything in here that we can't comply with or won't comply with.
Let me go down a couple of things. And some of these justification will be Mr. O'Brien's testimony, our professional planner. We've addressed the issue in number six about the paving construction company, I believe. We have no problem with 1 through 5, which are detail. Have you resolved the issue with solid waste and storage? I believe we've had that. I'm looking for what might be, so far I haven't seen anything we have a problem with, Steve.
Right.
It looks like we can resolve every issue that was raised in the CME report dated September 11, 2023. Would you concur, Steve?
Yes, I will. Yes, I do.
Let's get over to the sub reports, if you will. First report is that dated May 2, 2023. And I think that's the Environmental Commission. I don't think there's any others. We've addressed the issue with, well, why don't you address those? You see it in front of you?
Yeah, so the first bullet point talks about the proposed impervious coverage, excuse me, and the impact that that will have or may have. The, we've talked about the fact that we're adding drywells as part of the project to manage the increased impervious coverage that will result from that. The other comments in the review are regarding the wetlands, how they'll be protected during construction. You know, the site, we've received approval from the Soil Conservation District, which requires that the disturbance areas be demarcated and lined with silt fence. That's going to be part of the construction process. They've requested a tree removal and replacement plan be prepared and submitted for review. We'll do that. That was a comment also from Mr. Russo. And then the last bullet point is applicant investigate the feasibility for solar panels on the roof, green roof or cool roof technology. They have investigated that, and it just, it's not, doesn't work for this size project. And it just, so, yeah, they've looked into it, but they're not going to move forward with that.
Well, I'll look at John Haas's report dated September 13, 2023. Let's look for, number one, I think we've resolved that. The business to be operated will be the landscaping. Let's go to number two. We've agreed to comply with the fire sprinkler system under the Uniform Construction Code. Number three, we will obtain, as required, an annual fire permit from fire prevention. And I think those address Mr. Haas's comments. Do you have any other reports, John?
There's...
You have to give them yet a septic report, right?
Well, yeah, the testing has been done. The site has been reviewed by Somerset County Health Department. The tests have been done. We haven't done the septic design plan yet, just because we wanted to make sure that there was an approval from this board before proceeding with that. But that's the next step, of course. Before any construction permits are issued, there will need to be the approval from DEP, of course, but also the Somerset County Health Department for the new septic system that's proposed as part of the project. And I think those are the only letters. There's a letter from Traffic Safety that says basically no comment, and the same with Sewage Authority. This is not a sewered area. There's no sewer around. That's why we're putting a septic system in. And so they don't have any comments either.
Okay, any comments or questions?
I'm going to put the architect, I'm sorry, Mr. Rich, did I interrupt you?
I'm sorry, I didn't get my thing on. You testified that the solar panels would not work on this?
It's not economically feasible for them. They looked into it.
Solar panels are not economically feasible. You would have to explain that to me before I could go along with it. Why wouldn't solar panels be economical?
They don't, a couple of things. They, in this project here, they don't, they don't, they're not there that much. They don't generate much electricity for, that would, they would be saving or utilizing. There's not going to be heat in the building other than the small office area. So there's, the electricity usage here is very low.
Good answer.
But how about for the residential dwelling?
I don't think they looked at that. I mean, that's just a very small roof. It's a small dwelling. Again, I think that, I would say the same comment there. From an economic standpoint, it's just a small roof, and it just doesn't make sense.
In fairness to, just trying to get Mitch Parker a little bit off the hook. I mean, I think it's something certainly that the applicant may want to look at to see what the cost and the cost return is. But, you know, today, he's not prepared to get involved in it. But in the future, he may. That's the, that's the honest answer. I was going to bring the architect up for a simple, several questions, Mr. Chairman. Up to you. All right, I just... Raise your right, Steve will give you the...
Can you state your name and your business address for the record?
My name is Joseph Krawiec. My business name is Joseph A. Krawiec, AIA. I'm a soil proprietor. Location is 5 Crescent Drive in Toms River.
Can you raise your right hand? Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
Yes, I do.
Thank you.
Would you spell your last name, please? Thank you. All right, Pete, have you testified before in development applications?
Yes, but not at this ward.
And how many years have you been a licensed New Jersey architect?
Became licensed in 1987.
All right, I ask that he be qualified, Mr. Chairman?
Go ahead, move on.
All right. I think, unless there are more questions, why don't you tell us the material that's going to be used, the type of building, whether it's a metal butler structure or some other structure, and what you, you've heard, you've heard the applicant, Mr. Fisher, testify. So you understand what the intended use. Is that correct?
Yes, it is.
You have not designed a floor plan yet. Again, waiting until we see if we obtain any approval. And then you would do a floor plan consistent with his testimony. Is that correct?
That is correct for the storage building, the storage maintenance building.
Yes.
There's already a floor plan been designed for the home.
All right, I'm sorry, thank you. And we've indicated that we're going to lower the ceiling level to 25 feet. Is that correct?
The ridge on the drawn building was 33, roughly. We'll drop the ridge down to 25, correct.
All right, and then only a sprinkled building, as required?
Yep.
Just tell us what, if you have a elevations or what's the construction and the color?
I have drawings on the computer. If you want me to turn them on, it seems like this is a little tricky. The building will probably be a pre-engineered steel building, okay? The floor plans, as we've said, will have one, probably two bathrooms, small office area, and maybe a more secure storage area location. The standalone, the home is designed to, the home is really interesting to walk up the stairs to the existing attic. You practically have to walk sideways up the stairs because they're that narrow. And when you stand in the attic at the ridge, I'm really not tall, but if I stand on my toes, my head will hit the ridge of the house. It's really quite interesting. We'll put an at-a-level addition on and a small addition at the rear so we can have place for the stairs. It's a very small house. We'll end up with some bedrooms and bathrooms and...
Pass me, how many square feet will the house be when done?
Oh, I've forgotten off the top of my head. I think it'll be about 1,200 feet per floor. I'm trusting my memory, sorry.
All right, and the, I call it a butler, but the steel building, the pre-engineered, what color are those buildings normally?
Any color that we want. It'll be up to Mr. Fisher to decide, but knowing him, it'll be a neutral tone.
Okay, because he's a neutral kind of guy.
He's a neutral guy, yeah.
Okay, that's all I have, Mr. Chairman. Anything from the board?
So right now, just the house is visible from the street. So this building, is that going to be?
You have to go out of your way to see it, really. And no trees are being removed, as this is what I recall from the report. Steve, I would defer to you for...
There was a question, Steve. Steve Parker's back up.
Yeah, there were some trees that were removed. That was part of the discussion with Mr. Healy and CME office. So that's part of why the replacement trees are. But none of the trees, those trees were in the back area. And I think a lot of them were damaged or, you know, unhealthy trees. But we've agreed to do a tree replacement plan in accordance with the borough ordinance.
Were these trees, like, in the upland area, I would assume? Or was it like back, I'm not following, like, when you say back of the area?
I'm sorry. I meant around the outside of the storage area, the area that was previously used for storage. So some of that area was cleared out, unhealthy trees. But there were some trees that were removed, and so those will be replaced.
Got it, thank you.
As far as the house goes, is it possible to get a quick summary of what it might look like? I'm assuming it's going to have some exterior renovation?
The drawing that I have shows the exterior views, if you want to see those. You'll have to bear with me, I am old, so this technology is still a mystery to me.
Steve, would you fill out the form here for me, so I don't get yelled at? It's a form, just name and address for Chris, Christine.
These are the floor plans of the home, as well as the exterior elevations. The elevation that you see on the top left is the front. It's basically a house. Can I answer that question?
Yeah, since you've got it up, I mean, maybe you can tell us how many bedrooms there are, you know, what's on each floor?
On the second floor, we will have three bedrooms, bathroom, and a sitting area, which is where the stairs are going to be located. It's really not viable to put the stairs in the house because the house is so small. On the first floor, there was one room, you can see the part of the L that sticks out to the right is an existing bedroom. We kept it as a bedroom. The addition to the back is primarily for the stairs. I mean, all about. And two more bedrooms in addition on, I'm sorry, on the first floor, there'll be dining room, kitchen, living room area, and a bathroom, of course.
Okay, some of the questions I have about, are not necessarily architectural. I'd be interested in a little bit more firming up who may be or may not be living there. I'm not sure that it's a house that should be used for housing workers.
Good question, Mr. Chairman. I mean, the intent is, is it's not going to be, as we know, in different areas of the townships, restaurants and other facilities buy houses or rent houses, and then they become overpopulated with workers. This house, as indicated by Mr. Fisher, is either going to be rented as a regular, single-family home, or it'll be, his daughter will take it over. But it's not intended that it's going to be occupied by any group of people. That's all I can tell you. I'm trying to think of what conditions we could put in. It's going to be maintained as a single-family residence.
I don't know what, what you can, how much you can condition. It's been a dilapidated property. It's still a relatively firm R40 residential area. My preference, if I had a choice for a use like this, that's a use variance, would be somebody connected to the ownership of a business that would be living there. Gives everyone a contact person there who has something in it, let's say. Not just a straight rental, but I know we can't require that.
Well, I understand what you're saying. It should be someone who's vested, has a vested interest in maintaining it. And as Mr. Fisher said, it very well may be his daughter. He volunteered that. I can't, that's the best, Howard, do you have any indication as to who's going to use that house? If that mic is working?
Yes.
Probably will be a family member. We're going to sink a lot of money into the house, so I just don't want to rent it out to anyone. It's going to be quite a bit of upgrade to it. So it's probably going to be a family member.
It'd be difficult to charge enough rent to recapture what you're doing to it.
Absolutely.
All right.
Hey, the other thing I was curious about, too... Hey, the other thing I was curious about too, the house is visible from the street as it, as we speak. How, how much of the improvements are going to be visible from the street when, when it's finished? Not the house per se, but the property in general. I would think, I would like to see if this is approved, that, you know, some main, some maintenance of a residential area. If you look in the driveway or you look at the property, you're not going to see all the equipment, the track, the trucks, the gravel, the piles, the cement cube things. How much is, how much of the street is shielded from the use?
You're going to see very little, nothing. It's heavily, right now, we have Colorado spruces, 15 footers on a berm. You're going to see absolutely nothing visible from the road passing by.
All right, that's good to hear, because you see really not an awful lot from the road now.
You're going to see nothing.
Except the house is the dominant feature, so from my point of view, I'd like to see that in you that way.
Absolutely. You probably, you will see nothing, the building, because we have a 10-foot berm in the front now. On top of that, we have 15-foot Colorado spruces dense, and we're even adding more to that part of the project. So you're going to see very little of anything back there.
What about for, even from the street, I guess you're saying we won't see much. What about the other neighbors?
You, especially in the. It's so heavily wooded, the area, you can't see anything. It's secluded in its own spot. That's one of the reasons why I purchased the property, the way it was set up.
It's also 10 acres. It's not, the neighbors would be a concern, but it's not like people are on top of one another.
Correct. Our rear neighbor is a farmer, and there's cornfields we're surrounded by.
Okay, any other questions?
Planner, right?
Yes.
Mr. O'Brien? I'm surprised you didn't come up here with your license hanging.
Um, can you grab the microphone, please? Can you please state your name and your business address for the record?
Kevin O'Brien, Madison House, Madison Avenue, Raway, New Jersey.
Thank you, raise your right hand. Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
I do.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We can shortcut this. Unless anything is changed, we can.
That's where I was going.
Accept as credentials.
Your license.
Thank you, Chairman.
No one pulled your license, right?
Not yet, no.
Not yet, okay. All right, Kevin.
So this is a use variance and a C variance. In order for us to make the proofs for this, we have to show you that there are unique aspects to this application. And among these are the history of the site. The history, as you saw, from 1979 was a junkyard. In fact, the application and Mr. Healy both point out, quote unquote, de facto junkyard. The applicant has removed over 200 pieces of equipment, removed gravel, and mitigated a number of code violations on this property after they assumed ownership in 2021. Allowed uses in this zone are residential and farms. As the chair has pointed out, the predominant character of this area shows a number of residential homes facing Bennett's Lane, with a number of businesses behind those homes. Proposed, as you heard from the applicant, is landscaping and hardscape, and landscape, as you know, is not an allowed use in the township. Along Bennett's Lane, between 27 and where the turn is to our north, there's Preserve Farm, two Christmas tree farms, three landscapers, a fence company, and an excavating company, most of which have some type of residential use in the front and businesses in the back. I looked up agricultural zoning in the, one of the books that we use. Mr. Healy's familiar with one of the authors, Harvey Moskowitz, The Complete Illustrated Book of Development Definitions. And in it, it talks about farming, and it says this, quote, "Farming is an intensive industry, conducted mostly outdoors. Residents find themselves subjected to noise from farm machinery, smells from livestock and animals, dust created by plowing, and chemicals from pesticides and fertilizers. Traffic bottlenecks created by slow-moving farm equipment are not uncommon." That's farms. Farms are an allowed use in this zone, principal permitted use. I think that after you've heard the testimony from the owner, the engineer, and the architect, that I think you can see that what is being proposed is a less intensive use than what is going to, than what would be allowed on a farm, and we do have Preserve Farm land around us. And I think that it conforms to the character of the neighborhood by resembling those other businesses with the residents in the front and the business in the back. And it certainly is not out of character for the other uses in this area. The other landscapers that have previously been approved, fencing company, the excavating company. In terms of the bulk variances, there are two. One is for front yard setback. The irony of this application is that we're not moving anything. We're not changing anything. The house is staying exactly where it is. What's changing is the right-of-way and the roadway, excuse me, the right-of-way. So Bennett's land is being extended by eight and a half feet onto what was the applicant's property. The house stays exactly where it is, but the applicant has to give up over 7,000 square feet of what is currently their property to the township, so that the right-of-way can be maintained. So we're not, we're not doing this. This is forces beyond us that are creating the front yard setback. The side yard setback, 25 feet are required in this zone, 5 feet is existing, and 4.4 feet are proposed. When you took a look at the site plan before you looked at the residential house in the lower left, the house is not perpendicular to the road. It's slanted. The property line to the left, or the south, is also not perpendicular. It is slanted. So because the addition to the house is going behind the existing house, it's coming a little bit closer to that property line than what already exists. And what we're asking for is a .6-foot or 7-inch variance on this coming closer to the lot line. And there are no rest, there's no structures on the other side of that lot line within quite a distance. So we don't, we believe that this is a de minimis exception to the ordinance. The master plan, of course, does have some words concerning this type of use in this kind of area. And one of the goals of the 2016 reexamination was to protect the township's cultural heritage by encouraging the continuation of farming as a viable land use. And my argument this evening is that this is less intensive than farming, but it still preserves open space. Part of the property that you are seeing tonight is going to be preserved wetlands. And after the LLI from the DEP comes out, that land is going to be preserved, which it is not right now. So that is going to be a tremendous benefit to everybody in the neighborhood, in the township, preserving this land in perpetuity, much like a Preserve Farm. And in the wetlands, there's no activity. They're just docile, and nature will rule. We also support the goal of identifying areas in need of redevelopment. And this one, as you saw from the original pictures, was a junkyard. What's being put in there is tastefully done, a modern building, landscaping. It will not be visible from the street unless you happen to stop in the middle of Bennett's Lane, get out of your car, and walk up that driveway. And I would suggest anybody who wishes to stop their car on Bennett's Lane is not making a wise choice. So the application, I believe, supports these goals by providing for a use that will beautify this land. This application also supports the purposes of municipal land use law. And among those purposes are, item A, encourage municipal action to guide the appropriate use of or development of all lands in this state. B, provide adequate light air and open space. E, promote the establishment of appropriate population densities. If this land were chopped up for single-family homes, you'd have a much higher population, and that is allowed. But this extremely large, almost 500,000 square foot site is only going to have one home on it. Provide sufficient space in appropriate locations for a variety of uses. Promote the conservation of open space, item J. Item N, to encourage coordination of the various public and private procedures and to the more efficient use of the land. I believe that this application is consistent with those passages. In terms of negative impacts, I can't identify any negative impacts. There's going to be positive by meeting the character of the neighborhood and preserving open space. And I would conclude to the board that as this application is for a use variance, as usual, we have to meet that three-pronged burden of proof, special reasons, which I've done in showing how it conforms to the municipal land use law. B, the positive criteria, showing how it meets the master plan, which, which we've done. And lastly, that we meet the negative criteria, which I've also done. So I believe that this application can be granted without substantial detriment to the public good and without substantial impairment to the zone plan and the zoning ordinance. And I welcome any questions, Chairman.
Anything?
Did we receive any public comments on this application?
Didn't get to that.
Will be opening to the public.
Have to.
Hey, we will then open to the public. If anyone.
Thank you, Chairman.
Out there has a comment or a question, now's the time to do it. Come on up to the podium. We need your name, address, and you'll be sworn in.
Joseph Chikowski, 100 Bennett's Lane.
Can you please raise your right hand? Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
I do.
All right, can you spell your last name?
C.I.C.H.O.W.S.K.I. Okay, I have the floor. Are any of the activities that are going on on the property now going to be part of this plan?
You'd have to just identify the activities.
1-800-GOT-JUNK.
No, we're not.
The, the property's being used to, to bring 1-800-GOT-JUNK trucks in there. They're using it as a transfer station.
Well, if, if it is, I'm not aware of that, and it won't be, Howard, you want to respond to that? Come here, sit here. Here, right here.
They're cleaning up, help cleaning up the balance of the property. Once that's done, they're out.
Have a seat here.
But the trucks are coming in with, with loads from other places, I mean, all over the place.
They're cleaning up our, our property there, and they're almost at that point. And once there's still some remaining stuff.
Okay, and.
That will be finished up, we anticipate, in the next 10 days.
Because, you know, I've seen trucks coming, coming out of there. It's nine, nine o'clock in the morning on Sunday, on Sunday mornings.
Well, I own the property, so I'm in and out of the grounds.
You know, my, my concern is that these trucks are coming in with, with, the trucks are laden, coming into the property, and they're, they're putting the refuse into 30-yard, 40-yard boxes. And I'm just worried that, God only knows where some of that stuff is coming from. What kind of materials? Is there any kind of hazardous stuff? Vermin, rats? I, I, I don't know, you know? That's, that's my concern.
Sir, let me, sir, let me just ask you over here. When you're saying it's coming in, is it being deposited on the site?
Yeah, the trucks come in, and they, they put them into the boxes that are on the property, and then they leave empty.
And they're there now?
The boxes are there. I don't know if the trucks are there. I know one of them parks down in, in Kendall Park.
Okay, all right, thank you.
There's, there's been car carriers, car carrier trucks, brand-new cars, or, or maybe used cars on, that there was.
We did a cleanup, and we were taking a lot of cars.
These were, these were new cars. They didn't come off that property.
Yeah, not to my knowledge. If, if that was in there, as far as I'm concerned, that's trespassing. It's not to my knowledge. My 30 yarders in there for cleanup. We're cleaning the site up, but within the next 10 days, that's going to be all done, done.
Okay. You talked about the house, how close, the house is going to be renovated, remodeled. That's the closest house to, to Bennett's Lane. If they ever widen Bennett's Lane, where, where will they put the, put the front of the house?
The house is where it's been.
I know, but the road is, the road is, the road is.
You blew up, no, no, I gotta say this to you, and I don't usually interrupt. I can give you 100 examples, if not 200.
No, I.
No, 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 let me finish. If, if the, if the, if the town expands the right-of-way, so the road is closer to the building.
Right.
That happens all the time. I mean, that's, unfortunately, whoever lives there now has lost a front yard. I mean, I can give you examples on Route, on Burnett Street coming out of New Brunswick. There's a house that's three feet from the road, but 50 years ago, they had a regular front yard.
It just seems to me that if you're going through all that work now, just, you know, put some, put the house toward the back a little more.
Do you know that it's going to be a. Excuse me, excuse me, gentlemen, sorry. If we could just talk one at a time for the record, because we have someone that's going to take down these minutes this evening. And I guess just to clarify here, tonight, the applicant is seeking a C variance for a front yard setback. So that is part of the requested relief that's here tonight.
All right, well, it's just, it was a concern of mine that the house is going to be so close to the, to the road, you know?
And I appreciate that. I'm not putting it down.
Let me just, Mr. Stahl, if I can just ask the gentleman what the concern is, because what we've heard is the location of the house, the house is not moving any closer to Bennett's. That the right-of-way is, that within which Bennett Lane sits is too narrow. So the town has asked the applicant, and this is a typical thing, to provide eight feet of land that'll become part of that right-of-way, so that the front property line, the town would be taking some of his front yard.
No, I, I realize that.
And the addition to the house.
If the road gets wider, the car's going to be closer to the house.
Can I finish my statement as I'm speaking? Can I finish what I'm saying? The addition is to the rear of the house, so they're not putting the house closer. So I'm, and, and with this new expansion of the width of the right-of-way, the house is still going to be 15 feet from the right-of-way. So I, I'm struggling to understand what the concern is.
Well, it's just that the house is just so close to the road that if the, if the road ever gets widened.
And that's why, and that's why the, that's why the addition, it's going to be widened within that right-of-way.
Okay, so.
So it's not going to go beyond the right-of-way.
I just, I, I was just spitballing that maybe, you know, he'd want to just move to, cut the front of the house off and, and add on to the back more, just so the house isn't so close to the road, if it ever gets widened.
Well, he is adding on to the back.
I know he is.
And he's already given the town eight feet. That's where the road stops. And that's like anything else. You own the property, you make a decision of, if you can deal with that.
Okay, well, if that ever happens, alls I know is that I preserve my farm, and, you know, there, there was 15-foot, 2702 feet of, of frontage across the front of my farm that I didn't preserve because anticipating widening the road someday. Know what I mean?
Well, you know they're looking for eight and a half feet, so you're safe beyond that.
No, I know, I know, but I'm just, all right, I'm, we're good then. Thank you.
Hey, thank you. Anyone else?
Greg Pignano, 193 Bennett's Lane.
Can you raise your right hand? Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
I do.
Thank you.
I just, I have no problem with him fixing the house up, or, he's renting, 1-800-GOT-JUNK, and at 1:00, 2:00 in the morning, getting in the trailer. I have no problem with that. I just want to know, there's my cornfields he's talking about that's surrounding him. How close is that building going to be to my property? Five feet?
Eve, why don't you just answer the young man's?
The building?
Yes.
Could be 26 feet off the property line?
Yes.
House, when you.
Yes, could you get on the mic, please?
And the house, when you do the addition? Four feet off the property line. That's, that's within code? Okay, now, okay. Okay, I'm sorry, ma'am.
Steve, take a, take a.
Okay, so the building's going to be about 27 feet off the, off my field property line?
26.
26. He, he has a garage, right? He has a garage, you have a garage there. You're going to do landscaping, you're not going to be doing paving? I know, you're one of the largest paving contractors in the
The answer is there's no paving out of this location.
So that means no Lowboys, no Arm Auto Max, no Peterbilts there, dump trucks, big stuff.
Hold on. He testified, could be five dump trucks, five
What size? Better than 23,000 GBW? Okay. Okay. Okay, so you know what they're like when they start them up in the wintertime? The prevailing wind comes right from there to me. When they start, then it, it is not a big distance to my house from, from his property. It's about 80 feet. When they start them in the winter, you've seen them, they smoke white smoke until they get hot. Right? The wind blows. I don't, I, I do, I could deal with everything else it was to do. I don't want to deal with that. And that's not a landscape company. Most landscape companies have small trucks, F450s, 550s, stuff like that. But he's got, it's all big, heavy-duty stuff. You know, he just paved our roads in the town. You know the kind of equipment he's got. Think about it. And there's corn in my fields now. Normally, I have steers. And the water, you know, ground pitches back, and you've got these dry wells or whatever. But then back there, there's a spring that, that's what feeds my, waters my cows. And when they're about, the runoff, it went to the back. And also, also, oh, excuse me, also, also, there's no water on the street, as you said. We all have wells. They have to be tested, and it's not, just because my well is here, doesn't mean it, doesn't affect over there, because your water table is huge, you know that. So I'm curious about that, too. Just, you know, they, they power washed their dump trucks out of all landscapes, they filled them back, washed them out. Where's the runoff going? That's what I'm, I'm just curious about that stuff. Like I said, the 1-800-GOT-JUNK guys, and then at 2:00, 3:00, I, I, that's fine. I just want to know about the, the equipment and the, you know, the trucks, the diesel trucks, the smoke, and that kind of stuff.
The question.
My question, I don't want, I don't want that big, that size trucks there. When they start them in the winter, any diesel truck that big, they produce a lot of white smoke till they heat up. He knows.
All right, but these are trucks they use as a landscape, not in paving. That's the answer. It's the only answer I can give you. Do you start up equipment in your farm?
Very small, yeah, nothing like this.
You, you don't, you don't do harvesting and, and have a bigger equipment?
Nothing that produces any smoke, no. Especially when there's steers.
None of your equipment produces smoke when it starts up in the winter?
I don't, Jimmy Harris Farms, my property.
Well, these are trucks that are, you know, licensed and they're regulated and
I understand that.
But I can't, the answer's going to be, he's not going to not use a truck that's capable of his business.
That size trucks. So he's not, he's not going to be running, and no Barbara Greens there, no rollers, no vibratory rollers?
It's a landscaping business, hardscape.
I know, that's, I'm talking about a paving company.
We're not doing paving. That's all I can tell you.
So let, let's, let's just clarify again what's been said. Again, it's been said a number, number of times now, no paving. So what they've told you, and, and just, if you can inform the board what your concern is, but what was said was it's a landscaping business, and we were told five dump truck, the dump trucks, pickups, a Bobcat, an excavator, a backhoe, and three landscape trailers. So that's what's said to the board. Are those type trucks of a concern to you?
It's the size. I just, you know, we could say five trucks, five dump trucks could be small, they could be big, you know, dump, big Arm Auto Max, 379 Peach, something like that. You know, big trucks like that.
Winter, we don't work. It's a landscape business, so Christmas goes down. So winter, there's no activity. We don't plow snow. We're done.
Okay. Oh, there is a question of what size dump trucks. I don't know anything about dump trucks. Apparently, they must come in different sizes. What, what do we, can you explain to the board in terms that they can understand what type of dump trucks?
Dump trucks do you use?
We have Mack dump trucks, a 16-yard dump truck that brings our material, takes our material. Generally, it doesn't come back until the end of the day. We're not in and out. We don't sell material out of the site. So it's out in the morning, not all the time, but out in the morning, comes back at 4:30 or 5:00.
How about the other four dump trucks? Are they all the same size?
Yeah, basically all
16-yard?
Yeah, they're all the same.
And when you say 16-yard, is that a typical?
Typical dump truck, it's a cubic yard, measures in cubic yard. That's the size of the dump in the back.
Okay. Are they diesel?
Yes, they're diesel, and they get inspected. Today, with environmental, you just know pollution coming out of it, or else we're subject to big fines. And there's scales to, you know, you go on it, and if you don't have your sticker, and it's done yearly, it's regulated. So the pollution today, you know, we're, we're strict standards on what comes out that stack. So smoke? No, that's violation. So the trucks don't even smoke today. That's how strict the laws are.
When you light them up in the morning when it's cold out there, they all smoke. You know that. It's what they got work. All right, listen. That's, what about the, what about the runoff from the building? It's going toward the back, toward the back?
Parker. So the, the property generally slopes toward the wetlands, which is toward the right of, as you look at the drawings on there. Generally, that's the way it slopes, but
There's a swi, I'm going, I'm sorry.
The runoff from the roof of the shop building is going to be directed into a drywell, which is behind the building, and then it's going to go, you know, if you're looking at the drawing, you know, north, drawing, toward the back of the property, toward the wetland area.
Which? The reason he has 10 acres, and the reason he's only using it because it's wetlands?
Well, that's
10 acres, he can only use three acres?
It's not all usable, correct.
Okay. All right. We'll see. Thank you.
Anyone else wish to speak?
That's, I'm, I'm done.
Or close, or a sum up?
No, you know I don't sum up unless absolutely necessary.
I have a question. I don't know if it's the right time to ask. Just wanted a little clarification on one of the testimonies. So basically, I understand that there is a lot of truck activity because you're removing junk, but I heard someone say that there's actually trucks coming in, bringing things in, like new cars?
No, no, I, I mean, Mr. Fisher can testify. He says there has been, the only thing that's coming in is that I got junk trucks which are taking garbage off the site.
But they're not bringing in anything?
Are you aware of trucks bringing garbage on?
We have, we have 1-800-junk, and in the next 10 days, helpless cleanup, they're done on the site.
But, and they're not bringing anything to keep, as a storage temporary?
No.
Well, you have a big site, so they could be filling up at different locations on the site and then bringing it to the front. Is that correct?
Yes.
Questions? Anybody want to contribute to constructing a motion?
I have another question. So basically, this, this business will be operational during the summer and fall months, but you will be shut down in
Well, I think, Mr. Fisher, you got the, okay. I mean, the only, the only thing you can do in the winter in this business is spring and fall cleanup, and you may, there could be some hardscape business, I guess, in the winter, but limited, isn't that correct?
Very little, yes.
Because of the freeze and everything. And you don't want to pour concrete or put stones down in the winter because they'll crack. Is that correct?
That's correct.
So there's very, the answer, there's very little that's going to happen in the winter. Most of the landscapers that I represent, a lot of do the snow plowing, so they keep their men employed, you know, or they, they go to different locations, weather-wise.
Okay, anything else?
They're not plowing snow, though, so what are the employees going to do in the winter?
I lay off my employees the third week in December, and then I bring them back March 15th. I've been doing that for the past 48 years.
So they'll collect unemployment during that time, work at other locations, and come back.
Hey, Alan, issue?
Yes. Okay, I'd like to make a motion that we approve ZBA 22-00018. And the, with, with all of the conditions that, that are in the the record, yes, the record, what we have discussed.
And so, and just one specific condition is that the vehicles are limited to what was listed, you know, as well as all the other conditions, as you mentioned, that were discussed, but I just wanted to bring attention to that.
Okay.
Anybody have anything to add or second?
I second.
Bill Reese?
Yes.
Alan Rich?
Yes.
Gary Rosenthal?
Yes.
Basim Verdas? Balaz Khan?
Yes.
Michael Doherty?
Yes.
Robert Thomas?
Yes. Hey, good luck with it.
I think, look, I don't give summations, but I give amends. I, I think you'll be happy with what he's doing, as you can see in 48 years and what he's done in two years. If there's some issues, I know I can count on Mr. Healy to call me and remind me, but I don't think that's going to be necessary, because I don't like Mr. Healy to work too much, you know? He's already overloaded. Do I get a point for that, at least, Mark? All right, well, thank you, everyone, and have a good evening.
Okay, is there a motion to close?
I move adjourned.
A second? On favor? Aye. Motion carried, meeting adjourned.